Call the City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Egwansley.
Here.
Byning.
Here.
Germaine.
Here.
Lamoore.
Here.
Mayor Clerk.
Here. I'd ask that we all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we gather this evening on behalf of our community, may we work together for the betterment of all and a brighter future for the city and its residents.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, first item, please.
The first item on the agenda is the opportunity to amend the agenda.
Any items on the agenda that council wishes they have amended or corrected? Okay, next item, please.
The next item would be citizen comments not related to an agenda item.
Thank you. This time, we give opportunities for those present if they wish to make comments to the City Council, mindful of the rules of the chamber and time, and it's not related to an agenda item. And obviously, we're at the county facility here, and the county commissioners, thank them again for allowing the City Council to use this facility while ours is being renovated. And of course, the microphone is at the side of the room, not in the front. And if you wish to speak, name and address, please.
Glory Rafco, 127 Borges. I'm just here to congratulate all the people that worked on Saturday on the homes in the East End. It was such a wonderful turnout, and all the people didn't live in the city, but they did live in the community. So it turned out to be a community organization. And, you know, one of the best things, not just how the houses looked when they were done, but how the people looked. They were so grateful, and some of them waited till the end and came and couldn't believe it was their home. It was, you know, spruced up, and it really looked nice. So thanks to the community and all the people that gave up four to six hours Saturday to help someone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please. Name and address.
Jason Matthews, 1445 Maple Boulevard. I just wanted to talk about Cultivate Community. We had about 250 volunteers out there. When I came up with the idea, I just was hoping that we can just get four or five teams out there. We had 15 teams, 16 houses we did, and just to see people just pulling up and saying, "Hey, what are you guys doing? Can we help?" Absolutely. So we put them to work, and it was just amazing. And, you know, I want to thank Brian for stopping by and talking to everybody, every single team. I want to thank Michelle for having a team and next year's goal. And I want to thank Kelly for being a judge and also saying a couple of words. Next year's goal, 30 teams. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Next, your name and address, please.
Anthony Hoskins, 120 East Chester. I'm the executive director of the community center. And as I said, we're together, Jason and I, we just wanted to thank the city for allowing us to have the parking lot. I'd like to thank everyone who was involved. And to see something like that, everyone comes together, as Ms. Rafco said, it was glorious to see people come up, come stop out, get out, and help. Michelle, as Michelle LaVoie said, and I believe her, it's grassroots at its finest, and it's going to get bigger and better. And this is what I know you guys strive to have the city become, and it's the first step to something bigger. So again, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vince, for allowing that to go, to happen, to stay, to park a lot. So it was a blessed day. Weather was nice, and people were great. Community was excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment? Representative Bellino, welcome.
Thank you. Joe Bellino, 1285 Hollywood Drive. Mayor and council, thank you for letting me address you today. A while back, my leadership came to me and said they might have a few bucks in the budget left for next year because some things have dropped off the budget. And they said, "Do you have any projects in mind?" Well, that day, there was a nice article in the paper about your concerns, what was happening at the Arthur Loveslow Community Center. And I thought that could be a good project. So I wrote some stuff up for my leadership and presented it to him, and it was accepted. And we got $100,000 grant for the community center for work on the roof, the HVA system, and some brickwork maybe, or whatever else needs to be done. And I want to thank the mayor and his team for giving me the ideas of what needed to be fixed. I want to thank Vincent Pastu for being the liaison for the state, and hopefully, we'll get something next year, too.
Thanks, everybody. Just a quick question, so just some clarity, because, you know, the opportunity comes when revenue becomes available from the state. There's a process for that. I think you kind of made a comment there of how Mr. Pastu is the liaison with the state in that, because the grant, and it comes from the state, sometimes very specific to who and how. And I think just to follow that, how that might kind of transpire with the city manager?
When the money comes to the city manager, I think there's a paperwork showing up, and you'll tell them again what you're going to do. You'll mirror what I said. And when it gets done, there'll be another piece of paper you fill out and send to them, and that's how it is. Now, it's not a contract enforceable in court, but I know you'll do the right thing with the money.
Right. I think as we chatted about that issue, you first kind of let us know, and then made sure the city manager was an opportunity to have that liaison with the state, to make sure we meet those obligations, but also how we manage that in with our other functions as well. So I appreciate that, and thanks for the news.
Very good. And this... To get back to what I was saying beforehand, who knew this would happen the same night? I don't believe in serendipitous actions. I think there's a greater power out there to push us ahead. And when no need's hope, and a healthier ALCC gives us more hope.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative. You know, there's items on the agenda later this evening. Of course, that will give some latitude as the administration, as that comes forward from the state, as how that applies to the agreements that we have before us today, moving forward and the opportunities that that will present. So thank you again, Representative Bellino. Other comments from those present here this evening not related to an agenda item?
Mayor, council, Dan Little, Monroe City Fire Department. Also here for the Monroe City Professional Firefighters, logo 326. Over the weekend, we were part of the Cultivate the Community, and we want to say thanks for letting us be part of it and give it back to our community. And we hope that we can do it again next year. Thank you.
Other comments from those present here this evening not related to an agenda item? See you in a... Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is a presentation, item 2062-911 Surcharge Presentation by Mark Grammick, Director Monroe Central Dispatch.
Thank you. Mark? No.
Yes. Something I can stand on, maybe it's all. Mayor of City Council, Chad Tolsted, 718 Union Street here in the city. I'm here on behalf of the citizens from Monroe County 911 to show you a brief presentation to be available for any questions you may have afterwards.
Monroe County Central Dispatch is the lifeline between the citizens of Monroe County and the public safety community that serves the county. Central Dispatch has been the single public safety answering point for Monroe County since 1997. Monroe County Central Dispatch serves roughly 152,000 residents and the tens of thousands of others working in or traveling through Monroe County daily. Three major interstate highways are part of the 1,948 miles of roadways that make up Monroe County. This presentation is designed to provide you with a better understanding of the proposal for a surcharge increase you'll see on the August 7th primary ballot. What are your expectations when you call 911? When calling 911, we expect our call to be answered by a caring and professional voice. Monroe County 911, what's the address of your emergency? We expect a highly trained staff member who will dispatch emergency services, providing you with an accurate and timely response to whatever your need might be. But as technology evolves, fewer homes have landline phones, and that number continues to decrease every day. More and more people rely on cellphones and other wireless devices. However, due to the rapid evolution in technology, the ability of a 911 dispatch call taker to communicate with you clearly can be in jeopardy. Not many people would have predicted 20 years ago that almost everyone would be carrying a cellphone, and that's the primary way we interact with 911. It is because of ever-changing technology that dispatch centers across the country find it imperative to update their existing systems to keep up with the needs of their communities. Next Generation 911, or Next Gen 911, requires that all 911 dispatch centers be capable to handle calls from landlines and cellphones. Next Gen 911 also brings text, video, and GPS coordinates into the dispatch center for proper responses from police, fire, and EMS. The ability for a 911 dispatch center to receive a text message is becoming vitally important, not only for the hard-of-hearing community, but for other reasons as well. Imagine, a teenager is home alone when they hear someone forcing their way into the home, and the only way to request help is through a text message when they hide in the bathroom, afraid to talk, fear of being heard by the intruder. GPS capabilities allow help to be sent to a person having an emergency that's traveling through Monroe County. If that person does not know where they are, and there's no one around to call for help, GPS can help locate them quickly. How has the increased use of cell devices affected Monroe County Central Dispatch over the last seven years? Data collected from 2011 through 2017 shows that calls to 911 have increased by over 88 percent. The average number of 911 calls into Monroe County Central Dispatch in a 24-hour period is currently at 313 calls a day. It's important to remember that while call volume has increased by 88 percent over the past seven years, staffing was increased by two in 2016, but more help is needed. During a 12-hour shift, there's typically only four staff members on duty handling this large call volume among other duties they perform. Recognizing that we face challenges with increased call volume, and aging infrastructure, needed equipment upgrades, increasing expenses, and static revenues, the county created a five-year capital improvement plan so these needs could be identified and prioritized. The 911 District Board reviewed future funding options and decided that an increase to the surcharge was the most logical option, as the surcharge is user-based. The impact of the proposed surcharge increase can be broken down to just over five cents a day, $1.58 per month, and $18.96 per year for a device capable of calling 911. Why increase the surcharge? This is the needed short-term funding. Monroe County made a large investment in 800 megahertz radios in 2003 with a nearly $9 million radio infrastructure upgrade to create a simulcast radio system for complete radio coverage. One of the features that was not available at the time was 800 megahertz fire paging. Monroe County currently maintains two radio systems to allow for fire paging, and the VHF fire paging coverage county-wide is not always reliable. Bringing fire services to the 800 megahertz fire paging platform would provide more reliable paging and a long-term cost saving. While the large investment was made in 2003 to purchase equipment that included more than 1,200 radios, that technology has reached end of life. With advancements in technology, the new needed equipment is costly, but should provide the same 10- to 15-year window of use as the existing ones. Could you imagine having the same cellphone for 10 to 15 years? Or your laptop computer for that long? The radios used in the field are much like your cellular phone and laptop computer when identifying the functions that it provides. Why increase the surcharge? This is the needed midterm funding. As call volumes steadily increase, advanced technology is creating more work within the dispatch center. While text to 911 has not become increasingly popular nationwide, the trend will take upward as it becomes more of the norm, no matter where you are. While advancements in technology can be helpful in most industries, it creates more work within dispatch centers, and more staff will be needed. The telephone system that allows for text, video, and GPS is constantly evolving as well. The lifecycle for a telephone system in a dispatch center is typically five years. While Monroe County Central Dispatch moved into their center in March of 2008, they are already on their second phone system and looking to the third as the current one is approaching its end of life. Computer-aided dispatch, or CAD, is an important component of any dispatch center. While the CAD in Monroe County is cutting-edge, it is not Next Gen 911 compliant and needs to be upgraded. Why increase the surcharge? This is the needed long-term funding. The radio consoles used within a dispatch center have a typical lifecycle of 10 years. The current radio consoles that are the dispatcher's lifeline were installed in 2013. As you can see, the cost is nearly 3/4 of a million dollars to replace this technology each decade, and that cost is climbing. The workstations within Central Dispatch are very important to the operation. While a staff member works a 12-hour shift, it's important that they can sit or stand as needed throughout the shift. The current workstations are nearly 20 years old and have reached their end of life. Finding replacement parts are no longer an option, and there have been many advancements over the years that can help protect equipment, such as computer towers that run 24 hours a day, 365 days of the year. In conclusion, Monroe County Central Dispatch 911 is the lifeline that connects the citizens of Monroe County and the public safety community. Fast-changing technology demands that Central Dispatch continues to meet the needs of our community with critical technological advancements. It is essential. Central Dispatch has clear communication with you when you're calling for emergency services. It's equally important that they have the ability to communicate your emergency clearly and quickly to those responding to your call. Monroe County Central Dispatch is a lifeline, providing emergency services to all of Monroe County. The change from .42 to up to $2 per device per month is an increase of $1.58 per device per month. That's less than a cup of coffee. Is this critical technology? Worth it to you?
Does anybody have any questions for myself or Director Grammick?
Any questions from council? Make a quick comment. Thank you both for being here. I had the opportunity to attend a county township association when it was presented here less than a month ago, and it was... The conversation was interesting from the townships and looking at the need and what areas they may have some deficiencies and what they're trying to keep up with. I think I'll make a comment at the end of the day in my comments, but the public has to really be informed, be informed decision-makers when it comes to the ballot, and to make sure they understand exactly what is being presented there, because things are changing, technology changes. So I thought the video clearly gives an understanding of what it's about. I'll see if there's other comments or questions from council members. John?
I have a question. In some communities, I don't know if it's through their 911 system, but they have the ability, the central dispatch or their emergency preparedness has the ability to send text messaging out via people's cellphone to tell them about pending things like severe thunderstorm warning, or tornado issue, or a road is closed depending on flooding. Does this enhanced system have that capability in the future?
The county currently owns a system that we call MCANS. It's through the Everbridge Suite. And on our emergency management side of the building, we're just getting to the point where we're able to do that. Last year's Monroe County Fair was the first time we were able to put out a phone number where you could text that number, and then you would be opted in, and we could keep you up to speed on what was going on. So we would continue to use that product on the emergency management side. But with the text to 911 that we're bringing to Monroe County, we would be able to text one-to-one back to a citizen if they called and hung up. Or if we were told that they couldn't, somebody couldn't call us, we could text them from that app. But to send it out as a group, it wouldn't come through Central Dispatch as much as it would come through our emergency management side.
But you have that capability now?
We're in the testing phase with it now, yes.
Testing phase of it? Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions from council?
How long will this take for the upgrades to actually happen?
So the way this works with the state is the funding starts July 1st and runs until June 30th. So with the August 7th primary ballot, if we're successful, we wouldn't see that increase until July of 19. Some of our vendors that we've been with for a long time, such as Motorola, they have come to us and said, "If you have the good faith that the money is going to be there, we'll work with you and get the product ordered." So to order 1,000 radios takes about four to six months to build them. So we would be right on par with the money starting to come in. The county has been gracious in the past and worked with me to purchase items that were needed, and then we worked out a payment back. So the one piece we didn't really touch on a lot in the slide, Central Dispatch takes about 1.2 million from the general fund of the county this year. Five years from now, that number will be 1.7 million, and we look to possibly 2.2 million 10 years from now. With this surcharge increase up to $2, we believe we can be fiscally responsible, and we can still operate the budget plus these upgrades over the next 10 years. Our neighbors to the west in Lenawee County take $3 per device. So when we looked at the numbers, I looked at what five years would be and what 10 years would be. And surcharge, a little different than a millage, you don't go back to the voters to get it renewed. Once it's passed, it's passed, and then each year, I'm audited to make sure we're not taking more money than we should be.
And the same would hold true for the manpower that you're going to need to do all of this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Clerk, just a couple of clarifications. I have been at the other meeting as well. A couple items. First, you know, how that's assessed per device? And then, second, what I thought was a good comment regarding efficiencies and making those decisions on the number of radios and technology needed, and how you're working that through the entire system with the county of departments and stuff. Just a couple of quick comments on that.
Yep. So the surcharge is on any device capable of making a phone call. So it is landline and wireless technology-based. If you have a device that can make a phone call, it's charged a surcharge. If you have a contract, you'll see on your AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, Sprint, you'll see on your bill, state surcharge, Monroe County surcharge. If you... A question was brought up, if, you know, your son or daughter has your phone on their account, and they live in Grand Rapids, that money goes to Grand Rapids. If you go to Toledo and get a phone, it goes to the billing address of the phone. So if you live in Monroe County, and that bill comes to Monroe County, then you're billed in Monroe County. It doesn't matter where you get the phone, it's where the bill's sent to. On prepaid, they look at how long those minutes should last you, and then they... There's a percentage that goes into the surcharge based on prepaid. So it's almost an equal amount. So that part of it is assessed on the phone bills. On the allocation side of it, what we're trying to do is there's standards that have to be met on the fire side, and I won't argue with a fire chief on that. They say that there should be so many radios per seats in a truck. So we'll sit down with the fire services, I've already started that process, and we put a number on what we physically have to have. Some of the problems that the county agencies are seeing is back in 2003, they had 30 members. So they got 30 radios. Today, they have 10 members. So that need for 30 radios is still not there. And we're going to get them enough that they have a few extra. Again, it goes by seats in the truck, it's part of their ISO standard when they get their insurance checkup. And we want to make sure they have resources available to them. But we're making sure that we're giving them an amount that should be what they have. 1,225 radios were purchased 15 years ago. We believe that number to be closer to 1,000 actual needed radios now. So we're trying to be a lot more fiscally responsible with that. And there have been some communities, you included, that have started to purchase some radios. We can't give you the money back for those radios, but we can purchase all those radios moving forward. So, you know, not to sway you from purchasing them now, but if the surcharge is successful, that's part of the funding that we've planned to take care of.
Thanks, Mark. Could I ask that, because I think it's a good comment to make about efficiencies and spending, and really, not just going back and replenishing what was there, but really doing the analysis of what's needed because of the service and how we can best provide that. So I appreciate your presentation. Other questions from council? See you in a... Thanks.
I just, I do want to say thank you tonight. I know I came about a month and a half ago and talked to you. But Captain Tolsted and First Lieutenant Quavis, Chief McCormick, they've all been part of this process. And the one thing I pride myself on, and I was in here at the last board commissioner meeting, is we try to be as fiscally responsible at Central Dispatch as we can be. We're always looking at numbers where we can do better. And in our presentation, you heard Bob Vergiels, who voiced that for us, say, you know, $0.50 a day, $1.58 a month, $1,896 a year. $20 is not a whole lot of money for the life-saving technology that we can bring here to Monroe County. We are a state-of-the-art dispatch center, but we can be better. And, you know, my job is to make sure that whatever budget we put out there is fair, and it represents what we're trying to do here in Monroe County. And I'll continue to do that whether it's a surcharge or not. But surcharge would definitely help us out there to take us to the next step. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, Mark. Captain Tolsted, thank you. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is a public hearing, item number 2057, Public Hearing for Community Development Block Grant Budget. The final public hearing to receive and review comments on the Community Development Block Grant as of June 12, 2018. There are no comments on file in the clerk's office.
Thank you. This time, I'll open the public hearing regarding item number 2057, the Community Development Block Grant Budget. Any comments from those present here this evening regarding the CDBG budget as it's being proposed during the public hearing? Any comments from those present? See you in a... I'll close the public hearing. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under Council Action, item number 2058, CDBG Annual Action Plan 2018 through 2019.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu, I don't know if you have a lead-in that you'd like before any council action?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just again, to summarize, the City Council, our city administration's requesting adoption of the 2018-19 plan. The total amount is $779,500, of which are new funds for fiscal year 1819, plus the carryover. In many ways, it's a similar program to what was adopted this past fall for the current year that we're in, but we are receiving a little over $74,000, of which we put toward demolition. So we would ask the council to consider adopting this tonight for us to report.
Very well. At this point, I'll entertain a motion, and then we'll see if there's further discussion.
Your Honor, I'd like to send a motion to move to adopt the fiscal year 1819 Annual Community Development Block Grant Action Plan.
This is motion by Councilman Lamoore, spurred by Councilwoman Whitman, that the CDBG Annual Action Plan 2018-19 be adopted. Any comments from council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I had a question. I had a question. So since we got the great news that Representative Bellino located that allocation from the state, and a lot of those items, we were going to use community block grant money to finance those projects, the roof, the boiler. There's going to be money left over, additional monies that we won't be using for those projects now?
If... Mr. Mayor, if I may, actually, we were probably going to be looking at funding those through our, excuse me, general fund, the needs for particularly the roof and the boiler improvements. The boiler improvements will probably move up. We're looking out a couple of years down the road with that. But those are coming out of, I know we talked a little bit at it in our last session, potentially reallocating CDBG money, but that won't be necessary. This state appropriation can go directly to that without affecting our CDBG allocation and/or also what would have come out of the general fund.
So the 70, the additional monies that we had, the $74,000, we want to... You're recommending that we put that towards demolition?
That is correct. And again, part of it is, I still think there's some, you know, we did cut that area back in our budget this last year. I think there's still a need to look at that as part of a light elimination program. But also gives us the most flexibility if during the course of the year, we decide that we want to allocate that in some manner, we... That would probably be the easiest. be the easiest line item to, uh, uh, move to another source, uh, if that was the case.
Cause I was wondering if any of that, those monies would be able to be used for staffing at the ALCC?
Uh, we did look at that and, uh, you know, internally, uh, one of the challenges, uh, that we have, there are pretty tight parameters, if you will, with the CDBG program. Uh, we weren't comfortable to that point where we thought we could, uh, reallocate that without creating, uh, um, some challenges with the programs, overall program structure as to how we need to spend some of them. Uh, but we did take a, a, a look at it and, uh, and then when these two things came together, certainly with the additional proceeds, uh, that was a great help to us, so. Uh, but no, we have, we didn't come to that conclusion where we would recommend it. Again, that's not to say that we can't find a way to make it work. That's why the $47,000 in, uh, uh, proceeds for demolition gives us some flexibility if we find a, a clever way to be able to do this without, uh, creating any problems with the program, uh, structure. We'll come back to council.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Pastu? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second. No further, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Echo Angeli?
Yes.
Byning?
Yes.
Jermaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Clark, next item, please.
The next item is item 2067, consideration to approve lease agreement with the Arthur Lesau Community Center.
Uh, Mr. Pastu, if there's, uh, this and I guess the next item as well, if there's some, uh, background you'd like to provide, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, these are two, uh, separate actions on the, uh, part of the council. This first one being a lease agreement, uh, and the second, a funding agreement. And we did talk a little bit about this, uh, in our, uh, work session prior to the regular meeting here. Uh, in many ways, we use the existing lease agreement to, uh, with the city and the, uh, Arthur Lesau, uh, Community Center nonprofit. Uh, I, I highlighted the changes as that, at their, uh, nonprofit request, they have the city pick up, uh, the, uh, lease pay, uh, utility payments in the amount of $16,000. Uh, dollars. Um, we'd done a review covering water, sewer, natural gas, and electric and felt that would be a, uh, a good number to, to have it. Uh, as we discussed in the work session, when it came to the funding agreement, that was gonna be reduced by a corresponding amount. We can have a little further discussion with that. Uh, paragraph three deals with, uh, proposed uses of the building, uh, the previous lease agreement, uh, limited to youth programs and recreation. This, uh, proposed lease expands uses to provide cultural, education, nutrition, uh, social, health, and recreational programs, which kind of corresponds with much of what we talked about during the, uh, uh, the budget process. And then the, the other item that was changed is reducing the capital maintenance, uh, for, uh, ongoing repairs. Uh, in the prior agreement, it was $10,000, uh, that the ALCC would be responsible for and we reduced that to $5,000. The good news is we've got some additional funding to take care of some of the, the big ticket items. And then there were just modest, uh, changes to the, uh, contract based on the, uh, um, manager and attorney's, uh, review, just to clarify aspects of the, uh, previous agreement. So, going back to where I started with this, during the, uh, work session, there was a discussion about reducing that, uh, utility payment to $15,000, which may have an effect on the funding agreement. So, at this point, I, just as introduction, that's what's covered, was covered in the proposed lease agreement.
See if there's, uh, questions or comments. John?
Uh, Your Honor, I've got a, a couple, I think we, I touched on a couple of them at the workshop, but I just wanna go over them again. Um, on regarding the lease under number three purpose, uh, it's just a, uh, more of a, more of a policy statement than anything else that we, we have, serving all age groups in Monroe County. I think we talked about changing that from Monroe County to serving all age groups in the community. Uh, the other part of it is, under the repairs and maintenance, uh, there's the idea that the city of Monroe owns ALCC. Uh, we own the building and we own the building that has the library and it's just like we are the owners of the city hall and the Sawyer House and the multi-sports complex, that it should be the responsibility of the city to pay for the utilities and the maintenance of their buildings, not necessarily the groups that are, that are using the buildings. They, in this case, the ALCC board is a vendor that we're, we're contracting with to provide programming services for the community, primarily for the youth and the elderly, uh, specifically, but other people as well. And my thought is, on the lease, that under like repairs and maintenance, it says that ALCC agrees to make all repairs at ALCC at their sole, uh, cost and expense. I, my, my thought is, is I think that ALCC should notify the city of any repair and the city shall undertake the repair. It's our building, we should repair it. Uh, we've been criticized before by the public that we don't maintain our facilities. I think we should have a, have a policy in place that if we have a building, we maintain it, we don't, uh, uh, co-opt that responsibility to somebody that's using the facility. They're ultimately responsible for how they maintain the facility. If they don't maintain the facility well, then we terminate the lease agreement. Uh, the other part is, uh, the, the way that this is set up under the cost allocation is, uh, the city is, uh, gonna pay for the first $16,000 of utilities. Uh, but in doing so, we're gonna do that out of the $140,000 that we're gonna give ALCC. So, ALCC ends up with a net amount of really 124,000 for programming. My, I'm suggesting that the city pay up to $16,000 per year for the, the utilities. Then anything over that comes out of the 140, but they start with 140, not 124,000. I, 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 the services that are provided down there are acute enough to the population, especially the children population, that I, I, I just feel that we, we don't, we shouldn't be reducing the amount of programming money that goes to provide those services, primarily for the kids and the elderly that are down in the orchard area. So, it's a little bit different, the way this is set up, is that, uh, um, we keep the, the 140 grand that goes to ALCC for programming. As a city, we pay for 16,000, so I guess our, our funding allocation would be 156,000. Uh, and then anything over the 16 grand, then ALCC would have to pay the utilities. And the reason why I'm suggesting that, putting a cap on it, is that makes ALCC board a little bit responsible for making sure that they keep a handle on the utility cost. If they keep the utilities at 16 or less, they don't have to pay anything out of their programming. Um, so those are, those are the comments that I have. It's a little bit different structure than what the city manager, uh, uh, has proposed. Uh, the other concern, or not concern, but the other comment I have on the lease under 14, uh, or paragraph 14, we're requiring them to submit monthly written reports. I think it would be advantageous both to the board of ALCC and the city if the city, uh, provided them a reporting template. So, we're, they know what we're, what information that we want, so they're just not preparing a bunch of written reports that we, on our side, get overwhelmed with and don't read. I'd rather have a very concise reporting template that they fill in and they give to us, to the city manager, and he distributes to the mayor and council. So, uh, those are some of the comments that I have. Uh, I don't know if council is in agreement with the comments that I have, but at this point, I don't wanna make a bunch of motions with the lease. My, my preference would be that if we're, if, if there's some agreement that we kinda table the lease and let the attorney go back and, and the city manager and, and tweak some of this stuff, but those are my comments. So, I've, I've got a couple of comments.
Okay. I wrote some notes and I'll, uh, see if there's other comments from, uh, the council members and then I'm gonna try to review. And if I, uh, as Councilman Michelangelo said, I, first I wanna ask the city manager, is there a time issue to get the lease signed? That if we went the route of sending it back with these comments to get it updated in the right, in the language as proposed, must be of council support? And, uh, first off, is there, I know we wanna get the lease done because we've talked about this for a while and wanna be able to move forward as we get into new, um, fiscal year. So, is that, uh, a challenge if it was to come back at the next meeting?
It would, Your Honor, it'd only be two days into the fiscal year, so I wouldn't have any grave concerns about it, I think, the prior lease, which is probably three years past, two days.
Yeah, exactly.
Would continue on until, uh, the new lease agreement would affect.
I think the conversation's, uh, well been had with, uh, the, the board as well as with the city and residents of where, uh, the route in which we're going. These are some adjustments, the councilman's making suggestions too. So, I'll take comments from the council members on those, um, to see if I can remember them or at least review and I'm sure that, uh, it comes to be acceptable. Uh, watch obviously the replay to make sure it's that. Item of change in, uh, to be in the, in the community was under item three. Under item five would be, uh, the ALCC would notify the city of city repairs that, which then be undertaken by the city. Uh, the, uh, utilities is paid up to $16,000, but not taken out of 140. So, in essence, the amount on the line it showed would be 156. If it does, the utilities go over that, that would be the responsibility. And, uh, last is that, that the city provide a, um, a reporting template to the board so that way the council is getting back what we're looking for and not missing the market, uh, that, that necessarily would happen, but we know exactly what we're looking for. The board knows what the city is looking for and also gets reported in that fashion so we're not having to go back and forth on something.
You summarized them.
Okay. So, I'll take the comments from the council regarding those items, if they, if there's issues or concerns with them.
Your Honor?
Uh, Councilwoman Byning?
I wanna state I agree with all of those changes. Um, one of the things that the board, uh, we got really excited when the offer to help with the utilities came about because that's money that we would be able to use to help us hire another staff if we had some relief from the utility. So, I definitely agree with, with all of John's suggestions. I had a question about, um, number eight, assignment on the lease. Uh, we spoke with the city, uh, manager about, uh, renting or subletting, uh, a suite of offices that we have on the ground floor, um, as a way to bring revenue into the community center. I don't know if number eight would, um, make that something we're not allowed to do or...
If I, if I may, uh, I, I think you can still do it, it just requires, uh, the, the approval of, of the city for, for that to go forward. So, that's all that really is asking.
Other comments or questions from the council? So, I, I guess, Councilman Michelangelo, um, it appears that the, um, well, there's not any disagreement on those comments, but also it seems likely that the administration could put this back together for the following meeting, which would then require, um, some type of, uh, motion to, or unless they wanted to move forward and approve as is. Mr. Pastu looks like he wants to say something.
If I may, thank you, Your Honor. There's a couple of things I'd like you to, to consider. Uh, the paragraph five with repairs and maintenance, uh, clearly, I think, you know, there's a disagreement, uh, that we, uh, as a city could have done a, a better job in, in a lot of the capital maintenance items. Uh, there is a, uh, custodian that they have there and there is kind of a decent working relationship with, uh, finding ourselves in how we define, you know, what, what's a repair item. There's a lot of minor things I think they would, would be comfortable handling, but clearly the, the capital items, whether it's the boilers, uh, you know, and Bill Greenhall's looking at, uh, you know, some of the, uh, signage, uh, emergency signage, those are things that we can handle, but I would prefer the routine-related, uh, repair. If, uh, if we kept that language in there, uh, I think it would just be helpful in utilizing the resources that they have.
Yeah. Your Honor, can we def, can you define what a routine repair is in the, in the agreement?
I can probably...
Not now, but in the agreement?
Yeah. I think the easier one is to define what a capital maintenance, uh, expenditure would be and then by definition, uh, but that, that, that's really what I'm going with is, is that type of thing. Uh, and if that's the, you know, the request of the, uh, council, um, you know, we could certainly do a better job of, we could define that, I think, uh, much, much easier. Uh, we're getting to the reporting end of it. Um, it's a lease agreement, I think, and before it was all encompassing. Would it be more appropriate if we were to, uh, remove that and actually put it in the funding agreement, um, so that, uh, as opposed to the, uh, the lease agreement itself?
My woman?
Question regarding that, Your Honor. Um, so for the lease agreement, uh, changing the language there is actually sort of dispersion of the use of the building itself, which, uh, though not now, perhaps in the future, other, uh, entities may become involved in, whereas the funding specifically would then be used for the purposes, um, of this city's improvement. Is that more in line with what Councilman Michelangelo had in mind or...
I, Your Honor, if I may, I, I certainly don't have a, uh, thinking about what Vince is saying. Uh, when you read the funding agreement and you read the, the lease, some of the numbers are, are tied, they're, 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 they're linked together. If we wanna make a, just have a, a regular lease agreement, okay, and then have a funding agreement that are separate where they're not connected, I don't have a problem with that at all. I think it's a lot cleaner to have just a funding agreement that says, these are what we're gonna give you and this is what, you know, some of your responsibilities are. And just have a standard lease agreement that we would have for a tenant on the building, I think it's, it's cleaner. I don't have a problem.
So, the items regarding finance and expenditures, just that all in?
Funding agreement.
Funding agreement. Would be clearer.
Yep.
Obviously, they work together.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Might lead to what we do with the second item, I should get to that as well, but, uh, the comments from council. So, I'm gonna ask Mr. Pastu his thoughts, uh, from the comments and, um, if best brought back at the, uh, next meeting as with, uh, language and discussion as it then moved forward today. Thoughts, or councilman?
Your Honor, can I, can I just make a motion, since these are kinda linked together, that we postpone consideration of 2067 and 2068 until the July second, second meeting?
Support?
That, is that, you wanna make sure that, and, yeah, uh, the fourth is on a, on a Wednesday, so...
Wait, so it's the second, that's the correct?
On July 2nd, yeah.
The second. The comments? I think I, so there's a motion by, uh, Councilman Michelangelo that item 2067 and 2068 be postponed until the July 2nd, 2018 meeting, and the second was by, uh, Councilman Felder. There's a motion, the second, and with also the discussion on the items to be revised and kinda separated. So, we know what we're asking the administration to do as well. There's no further comments? Clark, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Echo Angeli?
Yes.
Byning?
Yes.
Jermaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Yes.
Just to, to clarify, I wanna make sure if we're okay with, uh, the restructuring that's proposed that will affect, uh, the dispersment, the numbers for the, uh, ALCC in the agreement, so. Whereas, uh, I took, uh, started with the premise of 140,000, less than 16 for utilities and then quartered it, quartered it up from there. Uh, we would literally be looking at, I think, 35,000, uh, for the first quarter, 35 for the second and then thereafter. If, if everybody has that understanding, uh, you know, we can, uh, put that together. And then I would incorporate, uh, the reporting, uh, requirement language or beef that up and pull it probably out of the lease agreement and put that into the funding, maybe a little more stringent, uh, ongoing requirement.
And these funds will be within the next budget year, so we will, uh, obviously be looking at that, that budget's been passed. There'll be some, uh, adjustments as we work through the budget year, as we try to make, um, uh, a balance to the amount that's being proposed here. Will be different and we'll have to work through that to the next budget year to understand where we fall to the amount that's been, uh, discussed and included, just so council has that awareness as well. It doesn't have to be done at the next meeting, but we'll have to go through that through the year to make sure we don't forget about it either. I know Mr. Sal won't, but I just forget about it, so.
Point of inquiry?
Yes.
Uh, would it be prudent then to, uh, for next budget cycle to amend the contingency fund by a reduced amount of $16,000?
That's essentially what would happen is, uh, at some point during the upcoming fiscal year, we would, uh, present that, probably with other budget amendments to reflect, uh, you know, what, uh, was adopted with the, the lease and the funding agreement for the ALCC.
Okay. So, it's not required at the next meeting? In fact, as you get down to our consent agenda, there's an item on the, um, fiscal year end budget amendment, so that'd be an example. We're coming at the end of the year to clear, clean that up. It might come before that potentially, but, uh, we just have to be sure we're mindful that we're making those decisions, uh, eventually at the next meeting, that we'll have to make sure we adjust it. Good point. For the conversation, clerk, next item, please.
So, uh, 2068 was taken care of in that last motion?
So, uh, twenty sixty-eight was taken care of in that last motion, so I'm moving to twenty sixty-one, Community Development Building Department Fee Resolution.
Thank you. Um, uh, Mr. Pastu, any comments? I know we, uh, discussed it in the work session, but also previously.
Uh, no, we're just, I think, uh, if there's any, uh, other comment, uh, comments from the council, uh, as we talked about at the work session on June, uh, fourth, uh, you know, we spent a lot of time, uh, staff-wise trying to, to get this, uh, right size so that going forward, uh, we're able to financially sustain the operations. A lot of efforts went into, you know, trying to get that staffing where we think it belongs and, and we know that, uh, when we do our comparables with other communities similar to Monroe or fine, we also know that, um, you know, we are going to be higher than, uh, our, our neighbors in the surrounding townships. Uh, tried to do a little work to see if I could figure out, uh, through their audit whether there was, uh, any kind of, uh, property tax subsidy and there just wasn't enough detail in there to, to, to make that determination, uh, Frenchtown Township or Monroe Township. We do ask council to go forward. We know it's a sizable increase, hasn't happened since two thousand and seven, uh, but it is needed to sustain, you know, operation, uh, going forward.
So with that, um, we can put on the floor and have discussion or just comments at this time? Your honor. Councilman Lamore?
Yes, uh, I, I do have a slight problem with, with the increase in the fees, uh, where, whereas I could see residents potentially not pulling permits, uh, and once they don't pull a permit, obviously they're not going to be compliant to building codes, uh, and the reason I say that is some residents have a, have a tough time paying for the permits as it is, as they are now, uh, and if we increase the fees, it's only going to make that more problematic. Uh, that's, that's kind of where I sit with that, uh, you know, a lot of people don't pull permits now. Uh, I think we're going to put ourselves in a position where more people are not going to pull permits. So I don't know if it's actually going to be, um, a cost, uh, helper, may I say, uh, to increase the permit fees if you have less permits pulled.
Your honor. I have a comment.
Councilman Michelangeli.
Comment on that is that the, the building department to some degree, at least the staffing of the building department is almost like an enterprise fund that basically it has to, based the way the state legislation is, that has to be self-sustaining without the additional, I mean, it doesn't matter if we increase the permits or we have to inject general fund money in order to make up subsidy, it's more prudent to have the building department sustained on the building permit charges. Now, the, the question is, and I understand that somebody may say, well, you know, I don't want to pay for a hundred and fifty dollar building permit, I'm just going to go ahead and do the work. Well, people sometimes fail to understand or read the fine print that's in their homeowner's insurance because if they had a fire or if they had a flooding or they had an issue or they had, they had the insurance company come in, the insurance company is going to take a look at the improvements that were made if they had building permits. And if they don't have building permits, then sometimes the insurance company is going to say, we're not going to honor the insurance policy because the work wasn't done per code. So there's got to be an educational process here. It's just not trying to get building permit fees for the building department, it's trying to make sure that the improvements that are done on a person's home are done to the, the current code standard. And it's okay if someone wants to do it yourself because a lot of people like doing their own home improvements, but on the other hand, the beauty of taking out a building permit is to have a licensed building official come over and take a look at the improvements to make sure that they're done according to code and get their opinion if it's being done right or wrong. So it, it's almost like you're paying not only for the permit, but you're paying for the advice of a professional to give you a opinion if what you're doing, you're doing it correctly. And that's a health, safety and welfare issue for the community. So, um, do, do I like increasing the fees? No, but I can remember also, just a little bit of a historical point, that it wasn't until the water department did a water rate study in two thousand and five that they found that the water rates hadn't been raised in eleven years and we weren't funding the water department the way that we should have been. And that got corrected. And I know some people were concerned about the water rates going up, but we have a very good water fund that we're able to do things in terms of water quality. So that's only being, I think, uh, from a council's point of view, it's a hard decision, but it's an appropriate decision to make in order to make sure that these funds are well-maintained and they're sustainable. So, um, I guess in summary, I'm in, I'm in favor of the increase in the fees in order to make sure that we have a, a sustained building department.
Let's see, there's other comments from other council members and then opportunities for follow-ups?
Your honor.
Councilman Vining.
I do understand why we need to increase the fees, but I also worry about the perception that, um, it's so much more expensive to do these type of things in the city, uh, home repairs. There's that, and so I am concerned about, um, about that if we, if we decide to increase it because I, I hear, and I don't know how often this happens, that a lot of people move to the townships because of the per, the high permit fees, the higher taxes and things like that. So I understand the need for the increase. Um, it does give me some concern, um, because of the perception that the city is so much more expensive and I, I think what John says about the education is true because we do have excellent services in the city, so, you know, you do get what you pay for. Um, so maybe some more education on the, on the process or the reason why we're, you know, increasing the fees would be a good thing.
Other comments from council members? I guess good my comments, say, you know, as we've worked through this, uh, we've asked the administration to go back and, and have, um, comparable cities and, and look in where we fall within what is within the municipalities and, and finding that the charges are, are higher outside the city. I can't speak to the township, I think they're, you know, that, yep, we're joining to the townships, but on the other hand, there's, there's, uh, different structures that are in place and different decisions made regarding, uh, services, whether it be public safety, uh, building, uh, and, and a variety of ways. So I can't speak to what their fees are and they may be less. I, I don't know if a person's making the decision to move on it for that reason or not, but I think they make the decision that they're also, they're not going to have the services that are provided here in the city in many, many aspects and from waste hauling right on through to, to everything else. So while nobody likes to have fees increased, I think that there's a reason to have it done because you have to, as stated, you have to be self-sustaining. And if it's not, then what is the option? Either provide less service and find a way going the wrong, the backwards to just to meet maybe, uh, some other standards. I think our standards are good, I, I would expect people to pull permits. So if they choose not to, I think there's one point that was, um, brought out is obviously from insurance standpoint, if you have something. I do agree that if you have a permit and you had it inspected, then you have the security of knowing that if something happens, that's where, that's where the questions will be asked versus, uh, internally. Uh, and if people don't pull permits, then we, we have an obligation to follow up on that aspect as well. And I think back to some of the other items that we put on the list, we talk about costs and, and when things aren't done and the city has to step in and do it, the costs are higher. And I would, I would, I would, uh, think, uh, pulling permits is just, it's standard to do work, you need to have it done. If we don't have that as a foundation, then we have a different problem to deal with. I think, um, even though it's, uh, increased fees, it's how it's going to be sustained, uh, the building department and the staff and how we restructure, I think is better than it has been in the past, in fact, and I think, I know it has. And I think of how we're going to follow through, so, um, nobody likes increases, but I think of something that's going to be necessary to achieve what we need to do in our community. Other questions, uh, Councilman Felder?
Yes, just briefly. Uh, the way I see it is that the money's going to be paid either way and either you're going to have that money be paid out through increasing in fees or you're going to subsidize it from the city and you're going to have the taxpayers fund it for, for everyone. Uh, it's, it's not like you get out of this if, if, if you, if you vote it down, you just vote for a public subsidy of this enterprise fund. Um, so it's not like you're avoiding it, it's not like we're decreasing the taxes at all, um, by voting no, you're going to have to pay for it either way, that you just get to pick how you pay for it.
Your honor, I'll make a motion that we move to approve the attached resolution and, uh, which sets the fees to be charged by the, uh, Community Development and Building Department effective July one, two thousand and eighteen.
Support? Motion by Councilman Ica, supported by Councilman Felder on item two zero six one, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, two zero six one, the, uh, Community Development Building Department Fee Resolution. Final comments? See none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Michelangeli?
Yes.
Byning?
Yes.
Jermaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
No.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is twenty sixty-three Monroe Downtown Master Plan and Parking Study.
Mr. Pastu?
Your honor, uh, city administrations requesting, uh, uh, council to approve the dispersment, uh, of, uh, the downtown master plan and parking study, uh, in accordance with, uh, Public Act thirty-three of two thousand and eight, uh, its distribution goes to, uh, surrounding townships, uh, the county, I believe, Road Commission, probably a couple other agencies for their review. It triggers a sixty-day, sixty-three day, uh, review period and, and then, uh, at some point here, probably the next couple of months, we'll have to have a discussion as to, uh, just to affirm what we've done in the past, uh, to have the Citizens Planning Commission be the agency to, uh, adopt, uh, that downtown master plan. But we're requesting, uh, council authority to, to start to initiate that dispersment for comment.
Thank you. Councilman Michelangeli.
Your honor, I just have, uh, this is more of a nitpicky thing and I hate to bring it up, but under, uh, and this is for the benefit of the attorney, under MCL one twenty-five point three eight four one, which is the preparation of a proposed master plan, it basically says that the master plan shall be submitted to the legislative body and the legislative body approves the distribution. It doesn't say that we have to approve the draft. So where, where we have here, the proposed motion is therefore it's recommend the city council officially accept the draft. I think we just need to say that the city council approves the distribution of the downtown master plan. Personally, I don't want to accept the draft because I haven't really thoroughly read through it all. I was planning on doing that during the sixty-day, three-day review period. Uh, it's, I'd, like I said, it's a little nitpicky, but it is a technicality that's in the state statute.
I would agree.
Okay. So your honor, uh, if, if there's no, I, I would just throw this on the floor, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve for distribution the downtown master plan and parking study as required by Public Act thirty-three of two thousand.
Second. Motion by, uh, Councilman Michelangeli, supported by Councilman Lamore on item two zero six three, uh, as stated. Any other comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Michelangeli?
Yes.
Byning?
Yes.
Jermaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Before we move on, I have one question for the city manager on that item because it does appear, I did get an inquiry about that because it is a lengthy, a document, uh, view and I know it's been, uh, pushed out a couple of times, it does appear on the DDA's website and all into the, I'm not, I'm just going to ask if it's currently present or will be present on the city's website or at least a link to it.
We'll have a, a link to, to that, uh, probably a little special, um, notice on the, the website, so it's out, officially out for, uh, distribution.
Yes, it is. I just want to make sure there's a message there that, but the DDA's, uh, has it out, the, the city will have it on their website as well. Okay, clerk, next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda and for item B, approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read one million, one hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-six cents, one one four zero, one seven zero point seven six.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any agendas on the, or any items on the consent agenda? See none?
Your honor, I'll make a motion that all the items.
I want to ask the public first.
Oh, okay.
Any, any, any of those present here this evening that wish to have the, any items pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion? See none, Councilman Michelangeli?
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion, all the items on the consent agenda be approved and the resolutions, uh, uh, all the items be, and recommendations be approved and resolutions carried out.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Michelangeli, supported by Councilwoman Jermaine, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, uh, recommendations carried out and resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Michelangeli?
Yes.
Byning?
Yes.
Jermaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
I have no further items, your honor.
Okay. It's, uh, Councilman Felder.
Yeah, unfortunately, I, uh, just have a few items here.
Okay.
Um, first of all, I'd just like to apologize for being absent on the fourth. I can tell you without hesitation that I much rather would have been here with all you fine folks. Uh, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Father's Day, all those dads out there, and I hope everyone was able to stay out of the heat. Um, uh, I was with my father-in-law, so I wasn't able to make it, uh, but, uh, thank you to everyone who attended Cultivate Community and then the Open Air Market as well. Fortunately, the weather didn't cooperate for that latter event. Um, regarding the power outage issue, uh, I was speaking with, uh, Chief White during the break, uh, about, uh, the, uh, community emergency response teams, uh, put in place by FEMA, I think that's under FEMA, um, and that might be, it has been suggested that that is a way to, to respond to any, to many manner of emergencies, including power outages, and able to identify, uh, those in particular need, those with particular skill sets or resources such as generators, so that neighbors can help one another. Um, it, uh, I just think that might be a good step for us to take, uh, and we can, uh, we can proceed from there and, and, and just be better prepared and responsive as community in the future. Um, lastly, and I think on a sadder note, um, I was disappointed to see the state of Michigan repealing the prevailing wage law. I think this is going to fall down pretty hard on working men and women, uh, and there's nothing requiring this, these businesses to pass any of these savings on to the governmental agencies with which they do business, but a hundred percent of the cost reduction is going to fall on the employees of those businesses. The city of Monroe has, uh, a poverty rate of twenty percent, that's one in five residents, and we have to maintain our infrastructure and we certainly want to get the biggest bang for our buck, uh, but I refuse to use my position on city council to contribute the issues that I came here to solve. Uh, I bring this up because the city's going to be affected by this, but I just want to make sure that the community is not going to be negatively affected by this because to me, this is an economic development issue. Uh, the employees of the businesses that bid on these contracts live in these neighborhoods and they shop in these neighborhoods. And if what we do here and what public office is about is to give people a better standard of living, then where does that start? We can't have a situation where everyone looks to the person next to them and waits for them to do the right thing while they sit and take a shortcut. Uh, somebody's got to stand up and do the right thing and the state's made their decision already, but I hope that we stand up and do the right thing. I hope that we continue to only approve bids to contractors that pay their employees a living wage. Thank you, your honor.
Councilwoman Whitman?
I do have one announcement. A few weeks ago, I made an announcement about drug court being here in Monroe and what a wonderful thing it was going to be. Apparently it has had, it has hit a snag and it has not started yet, but hopefully it will be starting to. That's all I have.
Councilman Michelangeli?
A couple of things, your honor. Uh, first, uh, I wanted to tell you, I wanted to express my congratulations to you, you did a nice job, uh, working with Semco to get a grant for the Telegraph Road Corridor Study, which is going to be, uh, hopefully it'll be multi-jurisdictional, Frenchtown, Monroe Township, it's something that's really needed. I know that you've been kind of shepherding that project for about the last year and I want to tell you thanks for all of your, uh, hard work on that. Um, walked through the precinct and I noticed that there's still quite a few folks that are not cutting their grass and I just wanted to tell people, make sure that you don't let the grass get too high where the city then has to come out and cut it because then you will be, uh, assessed a fee, which is a, a lot higher than really what you, you should get. You just went out and cut your own grass. Um, in regards to, uh, we talked about it at the workshop about the DTE issue with the power outage. Um, Ms. Dykman lives in the same neighborhood I, I do, I've had four of the outages as well as she's had and other neighbors. I, I think that we can't dismiss what she's trying to do, but I really would think it would be beneficial if we could get a representative from DTE here to explain to the community why we are at least having four power outages in the same location of the city. I keep hearing rumors that it's an infrastructure issue, that they don't wanna fix some of their infrastructure, but with everything that's going on with DTE, with the power plant, with the nuclear plant, with them wanting to shave money away from the community, when you take a look at their annual report last year, they made over a billion dollars. They're one of the few, we're one of the few states where public utilities are regulated, so they're guaranteed a return on their investment. I think it's only appropriate that somebody comes here to Detroit us and explains why we're having this power outage on the south side of the room. So I'm gonna ask the city manager if he would coordinate that. I think it would help out. I think a lot of people on the south side would appreciate the fact that maybe the city is, that the city's being a little bit proactive in getting Edison in here. I had the same concerns that Councilman Felder has relative to the prevailing wage. We can't just hope for a living wage. That has to be done by mandated by ordinance. City of Monroe has a living wage ordinance on the books that only applies to projects that are given state or federal tax abatements. They require those industries then to employ people that have living wage. We do not have an ordinance that requires living wage on any of our construction projects. I don't think it would prevent the city from having a prevailing wage ordinance, but that's something that we would have to mandate. We have to do that legislatively. We just can't wish it's gonna happen, so maybe it's something that we need to talk about at a workshop meeting. We're not gonna resolve it this evening. Then the other question, the last question I have is for the city manager. Could you give us like a one-minute update on where the fire department, the new fire department project's at, in terms of where we're at in the process?
We're at the point now where they've actually completed the construction drawings. There's a couple little modest changes, and it's gonna be delivered to the building department for their plan review at this point in time. July 2nd, the week of July 2nd's a big timeframe for our contractor, contractor at risk that we retained for this project. They're looking to put this up to bids for their subcontractors to bid on at that point in time. So from a council's perspective, we've got two big dates, July 2nd, the next meeting. City engineer Patrick Lewis and I will go through the process of what's involved with doing a approval on the guaranteed maximum price related to that, to move the project forward, and then we're anticipating at the August 20th meeting that that gets approved. So we anticipate that the project by August 20th should have all of the subs lined up and all of the necessary steps to go forward with that. I will tell you from, related to the living wage, we did make a point of it, and it was affirmed with my meeting with OCH Construction last week, that they have been bidding this with an understanding of a living wage component for their subs. So that's been incorporated into their construction estimates all along. As I said, just affirmed as recent as last November with that.
One follow-up question, Your Honor, to the manager, the shenanigans that are going on in Washington out of the White House relative to tariffs, are the construction managers, have they put a price increase that's gonna be on steel for the community here that we have to pay for?
Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Pastu?
Much of the condensed timeframe that we're dealing with is a function of the concern that there may be some impact as a result of tariffs that have been proposed or possibly implemented. By way of example, most of the time, there's a timeframe once subcontractors get their proposals in, they're good for 60 days. Ourself and OCH, ourself representing the city, we narrowed that up to 45 days because of the concern that there may be that much market fluctuation. Over 50% of the trades will be touching steel, and so as a result of it, we're trying to condense the timeframe to eliminate some of that volatility. So that was one of those things that there is, and anecdotally, the estimator with OCH shared with me is one contractor that he was working with, they've done business with in the past, something as simple as just industrial doors. It basically says, I usually just do an update pricing-wise once a year. He said already, this was, you know, since, in a span of two months, he'd done three adjustments, so it's a great concern of ours related to this project.
And the reason why I ask this question is, you know, we have the reality TV show going on in the White House, where a lot of people think that the tariff stuff is really funny, that, you know, we're poking China, and then they're gonna poke us, and then we got Canada and Mexico, and now the UK and everybody. This really has an economic impact on what people are paying at the local level. I mean, we need to quantify what this tariff, what this tariff could mean to the city, the city taxpayers in terms of this project, because I do think, when you say that 50%, 60% of the contractors are gonna be touching steel, I gotta believe it's gonna cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars in extra construction costs because of what's going on, and it's gonna be out of the taxpayer's budget as part of this project. So I, I just asking that, so maybe when you talk to the construction manager, if they're able to put what a number is of that, of this impact that we have to take out of the budget, because we can't raise any more money. We, if the tariffs go up and the costs go up, then we have to scale the project down to bring it in at budget. So it's less project that we get because of what's going on at the national level. I'm just hoping that we can quantify that to share that with the public on what this impact is. Thanks. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Biden?
No crime, Your Honor. Wow.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Okay, I have a few. First of all, I want to say it's great that the 911 project is going forward because it's long overdue. Also, I can't believe, I'm amazed again, how much a drone can affect someone's emotions. It's twice now. The city website, they did a great job, and the River Raysin as well, and when you watch it, it just creates all these emotions inside of you, so good job, well done. And again, for the community involvement from last Saturday, it just shows how strong our community can be. Thank you to everybody that worked at it. Thank you.
Councilman Lemoore?
Just a couple of things. I'll try to be brief as possible here. I just wanna thank State Representative Bellino for his hard work in getting the additional funding for the ALCC. That really, I think, helps us out tremendously, the city and the ALCC both. Cultivate Community, there are enough words in my language to tell you how grateful I am to those people that were down there doing the hard work, just doing tremendous things for these people that are in need of help. And Jason Matthews, what a great idea he came up with to help his city. We need more of this in our city. We need more people standing up and doing more things, not for themselves, but for the people in the community. Just a tremendous job on his part, well orchestrated. 16 homes were beautified because of his thoughts. I just wanna thank each and every participant for their efforts. Like I said, there's just not enough words in my vocabulary to thank them. I also want to basically post an invitation to the Westsiders and tell them to come down to the East End and check it out, see these improvements for yourself. It's quite a transformation, and, you know, don't be afraid to go down there and take a look. It really is a good transformation. That's it.
I have a couple comments, and I'll make them brief, because the Cultivate Community, I'll start there. I wanna recognize and thank Jason Matthews for spearheading this and bringing everybody together, and all those that were able to join in on the project over the weekend. I heard a lot of great comments, and I had the opportunity to, you passed that here today, and just see some of the great work that's done, and how that might spark and has sparked, others to look at their own yards and maybe do a little work on their own as well. There were some contracts, agreements that were present on tonight's agenda, as well as was the last meeting, so those items are moving forward. I just wanna thank for the consideration and the discussion opportunities to move those agreements forward. 911 surcharge, I just wanna again state to the public and that opportunities to watch and revisit the plane of this, to watch about what that means. Of course, it'll appear on the August 7th primary ballot, so be informed and vote with knowledge, the impact it's going to have and the importance it has on delivery of service on clinical issues that come out of the dispatch center, and why that's needed, and new technology and the next gen of technology. I think one point that was said in the presentation was, who has their phone that they had 15 years ago, or their computer? To think that's still gonna work today is not gonna happen. There's a lot that has changed over the last 15 years, and we need to move forward. On the agenda tonight also was some appointments. I think council for consideration approval of those, but it's my comment to the city manager, and I did have an opportunity to talk about some of our other boards and commissions that I know are still pending some appointments, and we talked about those in a previous work session briefly. City managers look at the calendar when we talk about how we look at not only the structure, but the kind of the composition of the CPC, some alternatives there, as we've done with other boards. The Recreation Commission, really revisiting that in its entirety of what is the intent and purpose of, and then the structure, what that should be as we move forward, and of course, the parks plans and all those things. And of course, the Library Commission, that is kind of, I'll just, hasn't met for a long time, but I think there's really, the time now is to revisit that system as a whole, of course, the county library system and how that's funded. I think it's a broad topic that we have to take on, so I think that one comes after the other ones that are already in place, and we can look at how we wanna structure that, and then we, at some of those appointments. There's an appointment here and there that still needs to be done, as I continue to search for candidates. Item that was over the past week was the farmer's market, and some changes there in the timeframe. If you did not get a chance to go to the farmer's market last Tuesday, go tomorrow. It was busy as could be, just a simple time change a little later. I see some great opportunities of growth there. There's a new manager of the facility. I think there's opportunities for great partnerships, moving that forward as well. So I'll make a comment on the DTE. Councilman McAlange made me think about this, because my functions and duties as Chair of SEMCOG, one of the items that I'm tasked with is serving on the Metro Halt and Affairs Coalition Board, and I serve on two committees or task force there. One is on infrastructure, the other's on local government finance, the great two topics that we talk about a lot, but with the infrastructure, the last meeting was about utilities, and there were our representatives from DTE that were there, the same gentleman that we've talked with, one, from the start of the whole valuation topic. The other gentleman, Marco, presented, and he talked about where they are in infrastructure and what their challenges are, and it was interesting, and I have a, I'll make a copy for council, and it's available, of course, through DTE as well. It came clear to me that their inability to keep up with the improvements that are needed within the infrastructure, and I immediately thought about the city of Monroe and our recent discussions on outages, and I was glad to hear that they have about a 200-page report that talks about transfer stations and substations and what that history is, so it clearly should be easy to obtain what our issue here is in Monroe, and I've shared that with the DTE community engagement person, to ask that, was look forward to seeing those reports, and specifically, those areas that may be impacting, whether it be a power transfer station or lines, and why that is. So I had that conversation as a follow-up with DTE. So, Mr. Pastu, I know you're gonna have an opportunity, I'm trying to remember the date in which they're going to be here. It's in one of our July meetings. So those are my comments for this evening. The Treasury will avoid.
I think a lot of what I was gonna say has already been covered, but Cultivate Community was a fantastic event, and one of the, my most favorite parts of it was that in our yard, we came together really as strangers. It was myself and my daughter and a friend of mine and her little girl, and then a group of gentlemen from IBEW Local 8, and we didn't know each other at 9 o'clock in the morning when we started, and by 1 o'clock when we were finished, we knew a little bit more about each other, and we understood each other a little bit more, and the family members kept coming, and we got to know them, and it was just a good day, and it reminded you what happens when you get out of the house and put your phone down. That was the best part. My daughter didn't use her phone for like four or five hours. When you put your phone down and really interact, because a lot of things come and go, but this was just a reinforcement that community and our interaction with each other and what we can do when we come together, that was all there on the Saturday, and I was honored to be a part of it, and just, and grateful that the city chose to be involved with it too. Again, it just shows what we can do when we come together. I'm also glad to see the DTE issue being addressed. This isn't the first neighborhood over the years that's been negatively impacted by multiple power outages, so I'm glad we're having the conversation, and we can maybe move things forward. On another note, the tax deadline for the summer taxes is rapidly approaching, so if you have questions about your bill, or you need a new bill, or anything like that, we are here Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30, and we do have a drop box. Just wanna remind everyone, so if you can't get here during those hours, please feel free to drop your payment off in the drop box located off the city parking lot. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu?
Just a follow-up on the DTE presentation that will be 6 o'clock at our work session on July 16th, that we will have representatives here that'll review the outages that we've had, and the reasons for it, and hopefully some solutions that can be presented going forward.
Good sir. Public comment? Any comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir. Name and address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jack Schwab, 47 Linswood. I have two comments. First of all, I was speaking with Anthony Hoskins and Jason Matthews when they left, and I said that, you know, Jason, I was gonna come down to the east side, but I decided, you know what? I could do this in my own neighborhood. We've got a lot of things in need cleaned up right here, and so we're gonna have, I went to my neighbors, and I got nine of them together to each have their patios cleaned at the same time, because, you know, things like that just around their houses. And the other thing I wanted to say, so I guess what I'm saying is that I think that kind of work that Jason's done is inspiring. I think the whole city should have this kind of a cleanup next year, and it can just spread. It can be, can be a very positive thing, and you made some comments on that, and I wanna support that. Secondly, when you talk to Detroit Edison, let me ask you a question. If you wanted to talk to someone at the city, and you wanted to really get some action going, who would you talk to? You'd talk to the mayor. You'd say, "Mayor, I got an issue." I think if you wanna talk to DTE, you should talk to Jerry Anderson. He's the president, CEO. Look, he's just an average guy. He's about 45 minutes away from you, and in the past, we've had the presidents of DTE down here. We've had meetings with them, and I think he would come down here and talk to you. And I can tell you this, if you get his support behind improving your substations or whatever need to be improved, you're gonna have a lot more action than you are, you know, by talking to whoever they send down here, whatever representative, especially if it's a public relations representative. I think you need to get somebody who can make a decision and say yes and get things done. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Name of Schwab. Other comments from those present here this evening? See nothing further. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
All second.
Motion by Councilman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Jermaine, to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Ike Wanjely?
Yes.
Byning?
Yes.
Jermaine?